That's okay, Anthony. We'll pretend.
No flag.
Okay, so, thank you very much. Let me call this regular meeting of the Fairfield Board of Education to order for May 17, 2016. Present is Mrs. Lou McCormick, Mr. Mark Patton, Ms. Donna Carnell, this is Jessica Gerber, myself Philip Dwyer, Mr. Anthony Calabrese, there's Tricia Pitko, this is Jennifer Maxon Cunnelli, and Mr. John Llewellyn. If I could have you please stand. I would ask you to put your imagination to good use and presume that you're looking at an American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a busy agenda tonight. There are no students with us at this particular meeting, so we'll skip over student reports. And public comment in the front of the meeting is for those items on the agenda that are for discussion only, which is items number 6A through G. Any member of the public wish to come forward and talk about items either 6A through G? And these are items on the agenda, items 6A through G, correct?
Is one of those items the math textbook?
No, that's, for voting items, you comment at the time of the vote.
Okay.
Point of order, Phil. Excuse me, but I thought that at the beginning, it could be any agenda item, or if it's voting, it can be afterwards.
It used to be that, but that last change said discussion items at the front, voting items at the time of the vote. No public comment. Thank you very much. We'll move on to old business. Item 5A, recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the social studies curricula K through 12. Do I have a motion? This is Gerber, seconded by Mr. Patton. Any comments from board members on the social security, social studies curricula K-12? Seeing none, out to the public. Does any member of the public wish to comment on the social studies curricula K through 12? Please come forward and state your name and address.
Hi, Tricia Donovan, Fairfield. I would just like to comment on the fact of PTA Council. I would like to thank the social studies curriculum leaders for their great work on this curriculum and for creating such a dynamic environment in the focus groups where parents were really able to speak and dialogue with you about what was good and what they needed further in the curriculum. And thank you for listening and taking to heart the research standards. A lot of parents had comments about the need for research standards and the need to create capacity for writing, especially as our students go through middle school into high school, that that capacity is not being created in the middle schools, and that's something that we need to look for. So, thank you again for allowing parents into the process and for listening and creating such a great environment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other member of the public wish to come forward to talk about the social studies curricula? Seeing none, back to the board. Any final comments? Mrs. Maxon Cunnelli?
Just very briefly, I wanted to publicly thank Dr. Puglisi for a very lengthy response to a very lengthy email addressing many of my questions and concerns, and just thank you, and I very enthusiastically support this curriculum.
Seeing no other hands go up, the recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the social studies curricula K through 12. All in favor, please raise your hand. It is unanimous. Thank you very much. The second item on the agenda is recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the recommended social studies textbooks, grades 6 through 12, per the memo dated April 29, 2016. Mrs. Gerber moves that. Mrs. Maxon Cunnelli seconds it. Do you have any comments from board members on the social studies textbooks? This is Lou McCormick.
I just want to say that it's a rare moment when I will actually read, try to read, seven or eight different textbooks with two different versions each. And I just want to thank you for being so patient as we discuss the variations amongst them and understanding that no textbook really is going to be perfect, particularly when it comes to social studies. But I really enjoyed them, and I'm actually still quoting some of the stuff that I read in one of them to people because I find it just so fascinating. So, you know, while I don't find all of them perfect, I think as a whole, I think the content is there, enough so that I think, you know, I would be supportive of it, and I thank you very much for all the work you put into it.
Thank you. Other comments from board members? Seeing none, out to the public. Any member of the public wish to comment on the recommended textbooks for social studies, grades 6 through 12? Please come forward. Okay, back to the board. Any final comment? Seeing none. The recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the recommended social studies textbooks, grades 6 through 12, per the memo dated April 29, 2016. All in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you very much. Item 5C. This is the budget adjustments annual motion, recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the superintendent's recommended budget adjustments as enclosed. Do I have a motion? This is Gerber, seconded by Mrs. Maxon Cunnelli. I think Dr. Tittle wants to make some comments.
No comments.
No comments. Okay. That's enclosure number one that was handed out at the last meeting as well. Do we have any board members that wish to comment on the budget adjustments that were necessitated by the changes that were through the approval process? Mr. Llewellyn.
Through the chair to Dr. Tittle. Could you update us on any conversations that may be going on with the town as it relates to the cuts at the state level?
Yeah, there really hasn't been much change there because we had a pretty good idea that the town's revenue shortfall, you know, what it was going to be. We're having ongoing conversations with the town. We have not, or I've not committed to a specific number. What I've said is I would like to wait at least another month's worth of health insurance experience to see what that plays out, but that we would participate, and we would be a good partner in this with the town. And we'll have further discussions as our health insurance gets more finally known. So, that's as far as it's gone. It's been very, very general, as it has to be at this point.
Okay, and what is your process going to be in terms of when a number is agreed with the town? Will you be coming back to this board, or will you be taking the decisions?
Well, I think this is one of those things where we'll hopefully land on an agreed-upon number or range, but then it would be something that would need to be managed over the course of the whole fiscal year. So, we would not be cutting anything specifically upfront. We would manage the budget to that number. And again, if we have most or all of it in the health insurance surplus, then there won't be much else that needs to be done. So, we're going to be flexible with it throughout the year. And I think that was the intent of the town bodies when they passed the budget the way it was, was that it would give the first selectmen and the superintendent, you know, maximum flexibility in terms of, you know, where can money be saved over the course of the 12 months, rather than having to come up with it, you know, right upfront. So, we're going to manage it, you know, throughout the course of the year, essentially looking at the budget as it's, you know, here's the number we have to hit, and it's X dollars lower than the one we have, and manage to it throughout the year.
So, if policy requires this board-approved movements between different categories, such as facilities, payroll, et cetera, how can you just have a blanket number that's absorbed without coming to this board for permission?
Well, we manage the budget every year to a bottom line, and then when we get to the end, we bring you the budget, the transfers. In fact, it'll happen at the next meeting. So, that wouldn't be any different than the way we manage the budget all along. The only difference would be that we're going to manage it to a lower number than the number that's in the book, but the management of the budget would be the same as it's always been. There wouldn't be any change there, and the board would look at the adjustments, transfers that have to happen by policy in June, as they have done every year since I've been here.
But if any transfers occur prior to the June end, that'll have to come before the board, is that correct? All transfers between categories?
Well, we don't actually transfer them. Right? We, you know, you can get accounts that are over expended, and maybe other accounts that are under expended. So, we wait to do the actual transfers until we get them forward front of the board at the end of the year. So, that's how it plays out. So, it really is not a different approach to the budget, budget management this coming year than any other year. There's so many variables in the course of a year on a given budget, unexpected expenses, unexpected savings. And if those happen to be between account groups, then those have to be brought back to the board for the actual transfer.
Okay, thank you. And I guess this is directed to both the chair and to you, Dr. Tittle. If you could please put on the next agenda, a review of the technology plan that you sent out several months back that I don't think this board has yet reviewed, but I know that there's about $2 million in next year's budget there, and I think it also contained things like capture cameras for $100,000, but it didn't go into a whole lot of specificity. So, I think going into the whole process would be very helpful for this board to understand that technology plan.
Thank you. Any other questions on the budget adjustments? Seeing none, out to the audience. Any public comment on the budget adjustments as proposed by Dr. Tittle? Okay, back to the board. Any final comments? Seeing none. All in, that the Board of Education approve the superintendent's recommended budget adjustments as enclosed. All in favor, please raise your hand. That's unanimous. Thank you very much. Item 5D, recommended elementary math textbook. That the Board of Education approve Bridges' second edition as the recommended elementary math textbook. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Gerber, do I have a second? Mr. Calabrese? Any comments from board members on the math textbook? This is Lou McCormick.
I feel like deja vu all over again. As you know, math textbooks have a special place in my heart because I think math is one of the most important languages that we learn when we're at school. And therefore, when I look at them, I do look at them, I guess, with a particular eye. And I have spent now the last two years looking at different textbooks, workbooks, ad nauseam. And really feel like I know several of them very well and have heard various good and bad things about others. This one, to me, I still am baffled by the recommendation. I understand that it is maybe the closest to our curriculum, as has been explained to me. However, I understood this to be a resource that was to benefit and help parents at home as one of the primary purposes, as well as maybe helping with homework and with teacher instruction. But I think the teachers have their own curriculum that they've been using, I guess, for some success, right? So, I don't feel that the parents necessarily have been included in this process fully. I would hope that also that we might consider tabling this for a different date, in that at this point, I feel like certain parents may not have had the opportunity to review it yet. And secondly, I don't believe that this second edition has been vetted. It hasn't even been around that long, so I'm not even sure what, how successful it will be in furthering what we're doing right now. I understand that this whole methodology is very training-intensive, and there's, you know, a number of other reasons why I just have to question it. I'm not saying that maybe it's not good. I just don't see that much information on it outside of what I was presented in two pieces of paper. And I understand that I had a concern. I still haven't really been presented with information, or statistics, or data, or really any explanation specifically explaining why this is superior to any other program, or how it is most similar to our curriculum. So, without this detail, I would prefer to maybe table this for another time. I don't know what the rush is at this point. We've done this new curriculum for so many years already. And I would love that before we spend, I'm not sure what it is, possibly a half a million dollars, which we won't be able to get back if we should change our minds later, that we make sure that this is exactly what we want, because parents have been discussing this for the last couple of years so passionately that can we afford at this point to just say, you know, let's just do it. Too bad, you know, it's only been around for a year, but that's good enough. I just, I want us to feel.
Mrs. Lou McCormick?
I'll close it up.
I want to make sure, is it your intent to put forth a motion to table?
I might.
You might?
Yes, I'm going to let the other board members speak. I'd like to hear everyone else's comments after having.
Please finish up your comments then.
So, given the lack of information that I have on this, and the lack of confirmation by parents that they are actually 100% behind this as a community, I would very much like to hear the other board members' thoughts after they've read this and compared this with the other textbooks that are out there that have been considered. And then also, I'd like to hear the comments from parents who have actually taken the time to read these textbooks and read other math textbooks as well, to get color on how this is performed, because maybe I just haven't seen it online, and there is data. I just don't know. I saw a lot of data on the prior Bridges edition, but not on this one. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Gerber?
Yeah, well, while I certainly spoke to parents, and I did do my own research, I think it's also very important to engage with the teachers, since they are the ones who are going to be teaching this curriculum and using this textbook. And we had a large number of teachers who were part of this committee that chose this textbook. I did take the time to actually meet with and speak to teachers, and had at a number of different elementary schools, and got some very positive feedback from them, in terms of both how they feel the curriculum has moved forward, and how they feel that this textbook plays a very important role in bringing the curriculum forward even more. So, for those reasons, and the fact that I do believe that this textbook will allow parents to have involvement, I don't share the same concerns that Mrs. Lou McCormick does, having spoken to teachers.
Other comments from board members? Mr. Llewellyn?
Thank you very much. I too actually spoke to teachers, and there are a great number of teachers who are not part of this process. It was a subset of teachers that may or may not have been selected in order to drive to a certain direction. I too think we should probably support this, support tabling this, because if I look at the email or the memo here of closure number two, we're basically being asked to invest $1 million in this book, because it has consumable costs every year. Based on the information that was provided at the prior, at the last two meetings, I'm not sure we've actually, this curriculum has actually raised the bar or the standards here in town. To quote Minnet's, back when they had a little depth to them, Mr. Dwyer commented back several years ago that, in looking at a chart, and I can pass it out if you'd like, of the 19 schools, he does not think we're in the middle of the pack, but rather in the bottom quartile. He asked if this curriculum, the one currently implemented, is going to move us to the top quartile within our DRG. You know, why Fairfield, why Fairfield wouldn't hold ourselves to higher expectations like California or Massachusetts is a good question that he posed. When we take a look at the information that was distributed, and then we look at the IREDDI scores, we, and I'll pass these charts out for everyone, we can look and see, here, if you could pass those down, please, that, you know, based on the winter scores and the bar charts, we're actually not performing probably where we should be. If you take a look at our scores vis-à-vis our DRG, DRG A and DRG B, you will see, in terms of how the S-BAC fared, we didn't fare at the top of that either for A or B, but we moved around. I did take a look at the analysis that was sent to me, done by Mr. Esmond Euson, as it relates to the correlation between IREDDI and the S-BAC. And I've got questions as it relates to that, because, you know, the sample size appears to be around 24, 25 students per grade. So, I'm not sure if the sample size there is really sufficient to draw any conclusions. I think that the second runner-up to this book, which also is not proven, but I think received better reviews, is a free resource. So, if our stated objective is to get resource to the kids and to the parents, there is a portion of the other resource that has no cost. And this, to be clear, is not about money. This is about doing a full and proper review of our elementary math curriculum prior to investing in a book. I think that once we've got this book, it's here. I think our next curriculum review is it 2021? Possibly, correct me if I'm wrong there, but we'll have it for a number of years. So, between the $514,000 that you're asking for now, as well as approximately $90,000 a year in consumables, and I'm not sure if all of the development time that is necessary is included in this, I think we owe more to the students in Fairfield. You know, looking at where we rank vis-à-vis some of the other districts, and based on your comments from, I believe it was 2012, Mr. Dwyer, you know, I'm not sure that this particular curriculum has made the headway that you would have been asking for back then. So, I do think we should table this. So, I make the motion to table this.
Could I, before you make that motion, I think one of our other board members had hoped to hear from the public before that officially came out, so if you could hold that, so that that could occur or not?
Yes, I'd be happy to. Thank you.
Mrs. Maxon Cunnelli?
Just a couple of things. Through the chair to Mrs. Lou McCormick. I was wondering, you mentioned having questions. I was wondering, how did any meeting go with Mr. Wakeman regarding the questions that you had in terms of the selection and how it supported the curriculum?
I spoke with Mr. Cummings. I didn't speak with Mr. Wakeman because he wasn't available for me until this morning. And I was not available this morning. Therefore, we did not have the opportunity, and that would be another reason why I would prefer to have the opportunity to discuss. It all seemed to be so rushed. We had a week and a half. They were very busy with their schedules, which I totally understand. And therefore, I believe that rather than rush this through, it's a big investment, it would be, if we're actually suggesting that this is actually changing.
Okay, Mrs. Lou McCormick, I'm sorry. I wasn't giving you a chance to, I just wanted to know how your meeting went. I didn't want to hear the reason for the tabling right now. But what I would say to that is, we got this recommendation two weeks or so prior to the last meeting. We had a meeting two weeks ago. Today is May 17. You had a month to have this meeting with Mr. Wakeman to pursue your questions. So.
He was only available this morning for one hour.
I'm speaking right now, so you're going to need to wait a minute. I asked you a question, you answered. Thank you very much. And through the chair to Mr. Llewellyn, I don't know if you realize that you've dropped a couple of bombs there that I think need to be replied to, and then I'm done. Number one, to in any way imply that this process had anything less than 100% integrity with not one shred of proof, I think is a horrible statement to let stand from this nine-member board. And I will speak to it directly, because prior to the recommendation even coming out, I did meet with a union representative and asked for assurances regarding the process of the teachers having an open voice, being listened to, not being shanghaied into anything. And this is from somebody with no stake whatsoever in supporting some secret agenda, and that person did not give me an immediate answer. That person looked into it for me, came back to me, and gave me complete assurance that this large committee, heard from a variety of voices, were in no way pressured, and that this was their honest selection that they believed was best to support this curriculum. And for you to say anything otherwise with not a shred of proof, I do find a little bit offensive. I also find it offensive that you continue to make slaps at the minutes, which I find to be quite adequate, not that you offer any suggestions for them anymore.
Stay on the topic of math, or you're right.
But I just don't, it is to a comment made at the board, and so I'm replying to it. I just wish that kind of level of dialogue could stop.
Can we go out to the public and hear what comments from the public wish to make on the math textbook? Okay. The motion before us is that the Board of Education approve Bridges' second edition as the recommended elementary math textbook. Does any member of the public wish to come forward and speak? Whoever gets up first. I wonder if I could get a quick, so I can manage time, if you will. How many people are here to speak on the math textbook? I have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Thank you.
Dr. Jerry Corleone, Fairfield, Connecticut. Having listened to the last minute, the last meeting online, I do have several questions. I've looked, reviewed the last 10 years of scores for this town, and then the other town which has adopted this program, Madison, Connecticut, were at certainly different places. We, in my own estimation, I'm not sure why we're not following the social studies that we just did, in which we review the program and then select a textbook. As a supplement, I have some concerns. I've watched a member of my family K through three, and I've tried to help her with going online. I've spent considerable time on this program for the online parent portion, and I find it difficult. I was raised on Tungstus Hill. I am not sure every family in that section of town has access to computers and can help their kids in one of the lowest-performing districts. So, in talking to the Madison teachers, they told me that they had extensive staff development. I'm not sure, from listening to the last meeting, how much staff development is built into this. So, that for me is a key element in this program. And I hope that before you pass on the book, that the amount and time for staff development is ascertained. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Who else would like to step forward? It would help the time if people move down the aisle so that we're not waiting for people to come all the way back from the back. Thank you very much.
My name is Adam King, 1084 Onkow Road, Fairfield, Connecticut. I'm a fourth-grade teacher in Neurichelle. I've taught math for 18 years. During that time, we've implemented many, many different curriculums. Never once did we take into consideration during that time how I was going to teach the parents. It's, choosing a math curriculum is about choosing for the students and not how to reteach parents what's going on. The Common Core has really changed the way that math education is going, and that needs to be taken into consideration. I am 100% certain that the teachers in Fairfield have the best entrance of our students in mind when choosing this curriculum. And it would really set us back if we didn't choose or adopt this curriculum this evening. It would put you back an entire year, which could eventually put you back five years, because that's what can happen when you have to implement a curriculum. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please step forward, state your name and address.
Vesey Dulles, 896 Mill Plain Road, Fairfield. I would like to share my objections with the board to the proposed math textbook for K to 5. My objections are really based on a number of factors. The first one being the lack of parental involvement in the overall review process. The second one is basically the cost value proposition. The third one is the lack of data that Mr. Wakeman did not present to the Board of Education. This is new and untested resource that hasn't been used in many school districts, and we're trying to get a resource to align to a curriculum that has failed to present good results. So, basically broadly, I want to talk about all of these five different factors that I just mentioned. This overall process began back in December. From the very beginning, the parents were not involved in the process. The committee consisted of 36 administrators, consultants, and some teachers from the Fairfield district. Parents were not Parents were not invited and involved in this overall committee. The decision was made approximately in the beginning of April. The parents were invited to review the textbook at the end of April. To be exact, on April 22nd, Mr. Wakeman indicated that he sent a flyer to the parental community inviting them to review the textbook, which is basically a formality. The decision has been made at that point in time. At the last meeting, Mr. Wakeman walked in the room, and when he was asked, "How much is the cost for this resource?", he didn't know. I was quite disheartened and shocked to learn that Mr. Wakeman had not bothered to gather the cost of the eight resources that we're considering exactly at the time when the state is cutting our resources and we're asking the taxpayers to pay higher mill rate. Further, I would like to point out that Mr. Wakeman indicated during the previous meeting that he's purchasing this resource for the parents. Well, I went to review the resource at the central office, and all I saw was a workbook. A workbook with simple problems. This is not a textbook, and in no way is gonna help the parents to teach math to their students. Basically, we're told from the very beginning that we're purchasing a textbook, and this textbook is gonna be in use for the next six years. We're gonna spend $600,000 for a workbook. We already have the workbook. Every single day, my son comes home with workbook sheets, and, you know, we can print those from the internet for free, so I don't see any reason to be spending $600,000 of the Fairfield taxpayers' money on a workbook. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please come forward, state your name and address.
Nikki Van Omski, 1485 Brookside Drive. I'm gonna read a little bit. So the last time I was here was when we were adopting the K to 2 curriculum, and back then, we didn't have a textbook then either. At the time, I spoke in support of the Fairfield Public School staff who were developing and implementing resources for the curriculum. I supported the teachers who were working on behalf of all of the kids, and I supported the teachers who were committed to providing a challenging, sound teaching and learning environment in their classrooms. I still stand behind that. Over the past three years, my children's math experiences, along with my own as a parent, have consistently supported that point of view. The math resources the Fairfield Public Schools have developed have without question met the diverse needs of my children, as well as myself as a parent. Each of my three kids has gained a solid foundation in the area of math. They're all interested in math, engaged, and want to continually, consistently learn more. The cohesiveness and consistency of the math instruction they've received throughout their grade levels, I have one in seventh, fifth, and third this year, has helped them develop a common skill set and a vocabulary. Because of this, they're able to engage in mathematical dialogues, both through classroom opportunities with peers and at home with each other. Additionally, they have skills that enable them to apply this knowledge to everyday situations. They exercise flexible thinking skills and challenge themselves to take risks in the area of mathematics. Without going into specifics about my kid, they're all different learners, and yet each of them is excelling in math. Their achievement reflects the curriculum and instruction at the Fairfield Public Schools, the instruction that they're receiving here and here alone. Ultimately, I want you to continue to recognize that in the ever-changing world of education, a math textbook is only one of many resources needed to support the curriculum. In order for our district to continue to implement a rigorous, forward-thinking curriculum, we need to encourage our staff to remain progressive and adapt, adapt to the constant changes in the field of education, and this can't be done through the use of one textbook alone. So I again stand here and respectfully ask the Board of Ed to continue to stand behind our professional staff, support our curriculum leaders, and demonstrate your faith in our teachers. And when you do decide to adopt a textbook, it should be a resource our staff recommends and supports based on the needs of our students and our district. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Please come forward and state your name and address.
Hello, my name is Tara Malecki, 36 Crocus Court. I'd like to thank you for your service to the children of our town, and thank you for the time to speak tonight. I have three children currently enrolled in grades 2, 4, 2 and 4 at Riverfield, and grade 6 at Roger Ludlow Middle School. I wanted to share my support today for the math curriculum. I'm constantly surprised and quite frankly amazed at the mathematicians that all three of my children are becoming. They have a phenomenal number sense, and they manipulate numbers with skill and ease, not just in their homework, but more importantly, in everyday life. I watch it constantly. I found that they're given the freedom and the tools to solve problems in creative, effective, and efficient ways. They're constantly asked to consider how and why they know what they do. They're taught to think deeply, and therefore understand deeply, and are able to extend their learning. And maybe equally importantly, they love math. So I enthusiastically support the existing curriculum, along with any materials that the educators who are skilled in this area feel sufficiently support them. While as a parent, I can surely study the options myself, I defer to the experts on this matter whom I trust. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please come forward, state your name and address.
My name is Sarah Bull Carey. I live at 111 Casimir Drive in Fairfield, Connecticut. I recently had the opportunity to work on the textbook review committee, and I would like to speak to the experience of reviewing several new texts, as well as the implementation of our current math curriculum. There were both strengths and shortcomings in many of the texts reviewed recently. As an educator, I was excited to delve into the resources that addressed the concepts and the Common Core. After spending time going through the resources, Bridges stood out. We spent time through the resources, speaking with representatives, and visiting school districts that currently uses Bridges. I love teaching my kindergarten students, and I have a daughter that is in kindergarten in Fairfield, so I took my personal time to truly understand the resources. As I went through the materials provided, it was evident that there were topics, content, and big ideas that were developmentally appropriate in developing number sense in our students. That is why I think it is great that we have the opportunity to have a resource like Bridges that can use to support student learning. I have been in the same grade level for 11 years and have had the opportunity to see how our new curriculum has changed mathematics in my classroom and in our school. I've had, I've seen great growth in the students' ability to explain their thinking and their ability to think flexibly. The students solve problems with a variety of strategies to come up with the same answer. They challenge one another during math workshops. Students defend their thinking with evidence on posters and math manipulatives. The children are exploring many different big ideas through grade levels that, in kindergarten, I haven't had the chance to see or explore in depth until now. The big ideas weave throughout different parts of the year and throughout each grade level in elementary school. We, as teachers, have grown in how we think about the topics we teach and how we deliver instruction. My kindergarten students are discussing the difference between a combination and arrangement. They prove that four red apples and one green apple is the same as one green apple and four red apples. They know that three red apples and two green apples is a new combination. By building combinations and exploring combinations in an investigation, students use different strategies to explain their thinking and understand a big idea, that there are many combinations for just one number. One of my students even realized that the bigger the number is, the more combinations there would be, and he proved it. This is just one example of how much fun we're having in kindergarten, and how capable our students are when presented with the right tools and strategies to problem solve. Our current curriculum has been so successful, and I get the privilege to witness this firsthand every day. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Please come forward, state your name and address.
Suzanne Meska, 123 Rygate Road. As a parent, I'm really not sure I understand why we're up here questioning teachers on a committee. The teachers on this committee have offered two suggestions. One is their first choice, and one is their second choice. The second choice one, the way I'm understanding it, is a less costly option. The first choice one, many members of the board in watching the last meeting asked relevant questions, as PD seems to have been the driving force in Madison, Connecticut. To listen to the responses of not being able to answer some of the questions that you, as board members, asked regarding PD and cost associations and amount of time to be given, I have to say I found a little disconcerting. If this is the product that we want, then I'm surprised that we can't show stronger support of it. I would hate to think we put something in that we aren't prepared to meet the PD requirements of. On the other side of the equation, my concern is, having watched the math curriculum review, to see that we are sitting at a 6G3 proficiency rating is not something that I feel as a district we should be proud of. I sat through the curriculum when it was brought forth with no textbook to the Board of Ed back then. I questioned why we would bring a curriculum without a textbook, and was told that that was going to be fine, and don't worry about it, we had resource sheets. And now we're going down the line of, in my opinion, not thorough review of the curriculum K through 5, and we are now spending $500,000 on materials. At this point, I really think I would like to ask the Board to have a full curriculum review with data points, and to get the answers that you asked properly vetted and answered. I didn't see it answered at the last Board of Ed meeting, and to make this kind of assumption and spend this kind of money, I think you really need to make sure you have it, especially if the alternative, the second choice by the educators, is not going to cost the district anything at this point. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's see, I think we're up to nine so far. Is that the last speaker on the math textbook? Thank you.
Tricia Donovan, Fairfield. I'm a little dismayed always, math seems to bring out the emotions in everybody. I wish that we wouldn't pit parents against teachers, because we're all on the same side of the equation. We want our students to succeed, and parents play a role, as well as teachers play a major role, and we would like to work together. So I hope that we can change the dialogue and make it a more positive one. All I'm asking of this Board is that before you approve of this resource, I ask that you get more evidence of its effectiveness, because as we saw at the last meeting, there were no data points. We had only qualitative understanding, that the teachers liked it, they worked well with it, and that was it. We really need more evidence than simple qualitative performance. I don't have a horse in this race. My children are no longer in elementary school, they are in middle school and high school. So I have seen the effects of, the cumulative effects of resource and curriculum deficits. Just last night, I was talking to my 11th grader, and he said, "Mom, I'm having trouble with oblique asymptotes." And I had to say, "What is that?" And he said, "I'm having trouble, because I can only use synthetic division. I never really learned long division. I know we did it a little bit in fourth grade, but we never really practiced it, we never used it in middle school, so now I'm having trouble because I can't do long division with polynomials." So evidence is very important, and not only is there an instructional side to math resources, but there's also a math side to it. And I know that we've spent a lot of money on consultants, and I really feel instead of spending money on Mr. Keough, we have that kind of expertise in-house. We have two curriculum leaders, we have teachers, we have high school teachers. We should maybe invest in a math professor to look at the math development over the continuum, and give us a different rubric score on the mathematical concepts and procedure development of each resource that might give us a little bit more balance between the instructional and the math side. We don't really have a very good understanding of this resource, of its strengths and weaknesses. And we know that every math textbook has its strengths and weaknesses. How are we going to supplement? Do we know what areas we need to supplement? And how does this resource fit in with the current curriculum and the resources that we're using? FASNAT, are we supplanting that, or are they supplementing each other? How does that work? I would also like to ask that you fully understand the results of our math review that we had at the last month, and how this resource will impact what we saw. We saw from the review that the S-Back showed a very, very large achievement gap. I was actually shocked when I saw that. And we really don't understand what areas are most in need of improvement in the subgroup of this achievement gap. And how will this resource specifically improve their learning? The iReady tests corroborate this large gap, and perhaps the detail that we can get from the iReady test can be used to better select and show how this resource is the most appropriate. What do our data teams tell us? They've been getting together and looking at the data, but we haven't heard much on why this resource fits the data that we have. I don't exactly know why we didn't see the springtime iReady test, which would better corroborate the data from the S-Back test.
Mrs. Donovan, you've reached your three minutes.
I've reached my time, okay, thank you. I just ask that you ask for more evidence before we decide on this, because we really don't have much.
Thank you very much. Back to the Board, Mrs. Eileen Lou McCormick, do you wish to? Please come forward.
Kelly Jacobson, Fairfield resident. So I just wanted to speak about math. I believe the math review that was presented to you a few weeks ago truly did not give you a complete picture of what is happening with math at the elementary school level. I have a math background, and I looked at the same exact data that you presented, but a bit more deeply and broadly, and analyzed it in such a way as to show a more complete picture of the opportunity areas of the current program. And that exploration, actually, I have a presentation, but I don't have copies to give to you right now, but what they show is that, my analysis showed that we might not actually be moving in the right direction as the presentation stated. That Fairfield is actually performing at the bottom of Derg A and B in math at the third and fourth grade level, when looking at the SBA data and iReady score show, as we've heard, that we fall short or barely meet grade level requirements. But let's set aside the data. I'm happy to hear that some parents are really happy with the current curriculum. I have heard from a lot of parents, however, that it's not working from them, and here's a couple anecdotal experiences. Currently in Fairfield, there are two Kumon centers, a Mathnasium Center and a myriad of private tutoring resources bursting with business. One of those Kumon centers alone has welcomed over 500 families in Fairfield since it opened 400 years ago. Kids go to these centers to get extra help in math and reading. For math, the majority of kids are there because they are struggling with elementary math or hit a wall when they start sixth grade and need significant remediation. The stories from parents about why they send the kids to Kumon and consistent across grades in schools, that their kids are still counting on their fingers in higher elementary grades, that they do not know their multiplication tables, that their kids are frustrated by all of the group work in math, and they just want to practice and do, that progress reports look fine, but parents think something is just not right with their kids' math skills. And it's this type of feedback, again, coming from different schools in town at all different levels, that I believe point to systemic problems within our current math program. 500 families in one center with each child on average staying with Kumon over two years. If we extrapolate that out to account for other centers and tutors, my guess is that easily over 1,000 families in Fairfield are seeking out extra help in math. We have one of the highest achievement gaps of all Derg B districts, and I can't help but think it's because a lot of people in Fairfield go for extra help, and a lot aren't even aware that they need the extra help or aren't able to do so. And I have to ask you as a Board, have you asked enough of the right questions to administration, teachers, parents, and kids themselves to feel confident that our current program is supporting our kids and teachers as well as it could be? Personally, I've openly advocated for math resources to better connect home and school learning for a few years now. I think resources at home are needed, as many kids learn material better outside of a classroom, where there are fewer distractions and it's easier to focus. Having a text in place enables kids to more readily work from here.
Mrs. Jacobson, you've reached your three minutes.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
I just think you just need to make sure that the curriculum's right before you invest money behind the textbook.
Thank you very much. Back to Mrs. Eileen Lou McCormick, what is your interest in the idea of moving to table?
Okay, so from what I've heard, it sounds like there are some people who are happy. And I think there are some, many of the teachers feel that they're very satisfied with what's going on. But then I'm also hearing that there is a community of people, and maybe it's not small, that are not necessarily fully satisfied with what's going on, and clearly not clear on what our curricular needs are in terms of supplementation and resources. And given that, we've been having this dialogue, and it's been very passionate within our community for so long. I would hate to rush this, particularly in a year where we keep getting cuts from the state. Why are we gonna rush spending $500,000 when we are not all 100% behind us as a community?
Mrs. Lou McCormick, normally you-
Therefore, I'm giving you my rationale.
No, no, normally you put the motion on the table first, and then give the rationale to support it.
Okay, well, I did it the reverse way. And so therefore, I think I would like to make the motion to delay the purchase of the textbooks until we have completely vetted the curriculum and understand that this is exactly what matches, and everybody is on board, including the-
That's not a motion, that's not a proper motion.
Yeah, you have to say, "I wish to postpone to a date certain."
I wish to postpone.
To a date certain, and what would that date be? The alternative would be to say postpone indefinitely.
I would like to postpone indefinitely.
Do we have a second for that?
Second.
This is Mr. Llewellyn. You've made your argument, so any other argument to be made?
Yes, thank you. I think if we look back at when these programs were adopted, it was adopted K through 2 in April of 2013, which would mean that the first year of implementation on an adopted basis would be '13, '14. If you kind of roll that forward to '14, '15, '15, '16, those would be our 3rd graders. If we take a look at our S-Back scores for DRG A and DRGB, Fairfield is the lowest-ranked school district.
I think we're acting on the motion to postpone, which is not arguing the main motion. It's just whether we should postpone or not.
Thank you. So in order to make a purchase that is going to impact so many students and so many teachers, I think that we ought to look at the data from our data teams. We should look at trend analysis. We haven't seen any data to support the recommendation. We've heard that the folks in other districts liked the book, but when I asked Mr. Wakeman what evidence there was to support that, there was none. Therefore, I support postponing this until we've evaluated whether or not the curriculum is the best curriculum for Fairfield. And I think that, you know, this board has in front of them numbers that say that we are performing at a lackluster rate. I wouldn't say we're knocking the cover off the ball, looking at the numbers we've seen or heard from parents. I mean, 1,000 students, 500 in one center alone. That should give everyone here pause and say, "Maybe we should reevaluate the curriculum." So I fully support postponing indefinitely the purchase of this textbook when there is a resource that the teacher selected as one of their final two that can not cost the district any money in the year. So we're not actually losing any momentum or any learning. I think that this is about the curriculum, and it should not be about buying a textbook here. We need to make sure what we're supporting is the best possible curriculum, not finding a book to fit a curriculum that has not been demonstrated to this board as being effective. I've not seen one piece of evidence, any trend lines, saying that it's evidence, that it's been effective.
Thank you. Any other board members wish to comment? If not, we'll take action on the motion to postpone indefinitely. Mr. Patton.
If the motion had come up that they wanted to postpone voting till we maybe got a little more data in terms of research on the textbook itself and where else in the country it had been used successfully or whatever else we would need to see this maybe slightly more properly vetted, I might be able to support that if this was to, you know, the June meeting or really not much else after that, if we want to have this implemented by September, truly one month. Indefinitely, you know, I'm not in support of that because we've been asking for a resource for two years now. In terms of, you know, the achievement gap, it's not that the central office is not aware of the achievement gap. We've seen presentations that show us that achievement gap. And in the district improvement plan, there are steps to be taken that the town education system, you know, will be going forward and analyzing and, you know, making sure that we vet things on a yearly basis to see how we are every year. That's what the teacher evaluations are for. That's what the tests are for, et cetera. And I fully believe in our staff that, to the point of the district improvement plan, that we will address those situations, you know, on a year-to-year basis and improve, you know, where we see deficiencies. So I'm not worried that we're going to go off and we need to, you know, totally look at and overhaul the K to 5 elementary math program again. I don't think that's necessary. I think the teachers have told us that's not necessary. So I'm not in favor of the postponement unless it's for a very brief and specific timeframe.
Thank you. Out to the public. There are members of the public who have spoken already. Is there anybody that has a different issue that they wish to raise that hasn't already been raised? As this is a motion to table, to postpone, sorry. This is only on the motion to postpone.
On the motion to postpone, but using data based on that, correct? Because the I-Ready scores have been brought up multiple times. However, next year they'll be using STAR. And the S-Back, those 3rd grades, only just took it this year. And you won't have full data on them until they're in 5th grade. So, you know, you have a decision in front of you to make. And even pushing it off to use Engage for a year, that's going to cause PD for the district as well. So no matter which program is chosen, there's going to be PD. You have to take that into consideration. And to use Engage New York, which I am very familiar with, you're going to make sure that you're going to need about 800 more copy machines because that's how much it's going to take to print out all the material.
Thank you very much. Back to the board on the motion to postpone. The two of you have already spoken. Let me see if other board members wish to comment on the motion to postpone. No, I'll only say that I'm ready to act now. This has been a topic for many years. So I think I'm ready to act on behalf of the teacher's recommendation. How about if I go to the secondor and then you get the final word on the motion to postpone?
Sure. So I guess first I'd like to respond to the comment that was made about I-Ready not being here. If you notice, the board members who are asking to postpone this have actually asked to add I-Ready back into the budget so that we can get trend line data. So, you know, the superintendent's budget eliminated I-Ready.
Can we stay on the motion to postpone and not re-litigate the I-Ready discussion?
Yep. So I guess a redirect to Mr. Patton. Mr. Patton, would you be acceptable?
The motion in front of us is postpone indefinitely.
That's correct. So, Mr. Patton, would you be amenable to postponing until after we've received our district improvement results in October, which hopefully will have some trend data in it rather than data points?
Mr. Patton.
No. We'll lose an entire year. I'm not for that.
Mrs. Lou McCormick.
Well, I would say that I would at least like to see the information and some data and a review of the data that supported this recommendation. Something more tangible than just kind of the paragraph that we had, since we haven't had really a full presentation on the rationale. Would one or two months be sufficient for Mr. Wakeman to put something together? In which case, I would do a date certain rather than indefinite.
Well, at the moment, the motion is to postpone indefinitely.
Correct, but I would object.
So why don't we take action on that and see where we go with that?
But I'll withdraw if we don't have, I withdraw that one, and then I will resubmit one with dates.
Well, the motion belongs to the board, not to the individual. Does the board wish to act on the motion to postpone indefinitely? Okay, so we'll act on that, and then we'll go from there. Mrs. Carnell.
Chairman Dwyer, I'd just like a little understanding of what you just said, if I may. You said that this, if I understood you correctly, this has been going on for a few years now?
The math discussion has been going on since 2011 at various levels and on different topics, is what I meant by that comment.
No, no, that's what I just wanted to follow. So this is the first time since 2011 the board is being asked to vote?
On this level of question, yes.
Okay, so I guess then my question is, it's five years. Why would we rush into maybe purchasing the wrong book if we've waited five years? Unless I'm missing something. And I wasn't here in 2011, that's what I was asking. So maybe you can help explain that before I vote to postpone indefinitely or if there's an amendment to the motion.
I have nothing comment beyond that the board has looked at math in a variety of topics and textbooks at different grade levels for a number of years. I only speak for myself that I am ready to act. Are we, okay. So therefore, the motion on the table is to postpone indefinitely. All in favor, please raise your hand. This is Lou McCormick, Ms. Carnell, Mr. Llewellyn, all opposed. Mr. Patton, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Calabrese, Ms. Pitco, Mrs. Max and Cannelly. Motion fails 3 to 6. Back to the main motion, that the Board of Education approve Bridges' 2nd edition as the recommended elementary math textbook.
Well, so I'd like to make a motion.
I'd like to call the question.
Well, I was going to make a motion. You didn't let me. You told me to wait. So I waited, and I wanted to make the motion to change it to a date certain.
Well, there's been a motion to...
I think I beat him, though.
There's been a motion.
I would disagree.
There's been a motion.
I started talking first. Let's call the tape.
There's been a motion to call the question. Mrs. Gerber, did you second that?
No, but he can second my motion.
A motion to call the question is not debatable. That will end debate on this particular motion, and then we would take action directly on the main motion. All in favor?
And you're calling to question specifically what?
That the Board of Education approve Bridges' 2nd edition as the recommended elementary math textbook. That's the question on the table.
Thank you. I'm understanding that. I want to check what else does.
He's called that question.
I could call a point of order.
All in favor of calling the question, please raise your hand. Mr. Patton, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Calabrese, Ms. Pitco, Mrs. Max and Cannelly, opposed? Opposed? Mrs. Lou McCormick, Ms. Carnell, Mr. Llewellyn. The motion to passes 6 to 3. So back onto the main motion without further debate, that the Board of Education approve Bridges' 2nd edition as the recommended elementary math textbook. That's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please raise your hand. Mr. Patton, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Calabrese, Ms. Pitco, Mrs. Max and Cannelly, opposed? Mrs. Lou McCormick, Ms. Carnell, Mr. Llewellyn. The motion passes 6 to 3. Onto item 5E, approval of the recommended World Language textbook. That the Board of Education approve the recommended World Language textbooks per the memo dated April 29, 2016. Do I have a motion, Mrs. Gerber, Ms. Pitco? Do you have any comments that you wish to make on that textbook, Ms. Pitco? Any other board members wish to make comments on the World Language textbook? Mrs. Eileen McCormick, Lou McCormick?
As mentioned for the record, I can't in good conscience approve this.
Thank you very much. Any other further comments? Mr. Llewellyn?
I have been approached by teachers saying that they would like a more traditional World Language textbook rather than an immersion-type textbook.
Thank you very much. If there's no further comment, out to the public. Any member of the public wish to make comments on the motion in front of us, which is to approve the recommended World Language textbook? And for those of you who may not be here too often, you do have a three-minute limit. Please state your name and address.
My name is Cara Martel, and I teach at Fairfield Woods Middle School. I've been teaching here for 20 years, and I've also had experience at elementary level and high school. First of all, I'd like to just take this opportunity to thank you, the board, for supporting the World Language new curriculum. I have seen amazing things with my students. I teach Level 10 Spanish, which is now vertically and horizontally aligned with the high school program. Needless to say, last year, students in 6th grade had 20 minutes of Spanish every other day, and now they have a full program. So thank you very much for that. The new curriculum lends itself to the natural acquisition of language, and it's interesting that this comes on the agenda right after math because I was hearing reference to as math as a foreign language. And I actually would like to touch on that point as I think that the old way of teaching a foreign language was really about teaching a formula, conjugating verbs. And now with this new curriculum, we are giving students an opportunity to learn holistically. And I've found with my students that even at the initial levels, Level 10, that they are able to have short conversations in the target language. What I also find outstanding about this program is that they are able to simulate immersion in a classroom, which is only a 47-minute period. And because of this new curriculum, we are able to do that. One thing I can share is that we're now giving students the opportunity to listen to authentic speakers. And if any of you have ever been to a foreign country, you know that that is really what it's about. When you're in a foreign country, you really are not going to be given a vocabulary list and say, "This is all you need for the day." You're going to need the skills that will help you to survive and to really decipher the information from all the different contextual clues that you would have. I know I don't have much time, so I just wanted to say, I remember when I first came to Fairfield, and I was speaking with our new principal at Fairfield Woods, and I was always commenting on an enigma of parents coming up to me and saying, "Wow, my child is now going to college, and señora, I am so excited because Fairfield did such a great job. My child has been exited out of World Language." That, to me, really moved me, and it always has for so many years because I realized that we were doing something wrong. It was never my intention to teach students so well that they could achieve an exit slip. My goal was to inspire them to learn the language. They can travel and communicate with others around the world, share cultures, and break the barriers of stereotypes and prejudice. This is the dream for the kids of our town, and I believe it is yours, too. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anybody wish to come forward to speak on World Language? Please state your name and address.
My name is Barry Raven. I am a Spanish teacher at Fairfield Lalo High School. I'm also resident of Fairfield, 492 Papura Road. I really enjoyed the opportunity to teach the new curriculum that you have passed last year, and I appreciate the time to reflect as we look at the textbooks tonight. From the start of my tenure in Fairfield a few years ago, I knew that this place and this program was different. The work the students produced here was significantly better as a whole than what I had seen from students in my previous schools. And that includes a Dergay high school as well as a very elite private school. The focus here was on what students could ultimately produce in terms of writing and speaking, instead of the students being bogged down with rote memorization and quizzes on discrete grammar. But this new curriculum is what makes our program fully aligned with everything I've come to understand in the 13 years I have been teaching Spanish, and it goes along with everything I've learned about second language acquisition. Attending Harvard for my master's degree in education, I specialized in second language acquisition. All of my courses in this area centered around Crashen's theory of comprehensible input. According to this theory, the learner improves and progresses when he or she receives second language input that is one step beyond his or her current stage of linguistic competence. With this new curriculum's emphasis on reading and listening, we are assessing students based on the actual standards, and we are providing exactly the comprehensible input that I know needs to be present in order for students to write and speak well. But it helps us to have textbooks that help provide that comprehensible input. Above and beyond that, I just wanted to mention that beyond the fact that this is good practice in language teaching, there are also some observations I've made in the last year. First of all, it's remarkable to see how well the curriculum connects to the coursework in other content areas, including for my juniors, AP US and AP World History. We are reading the news as it comes out in the target language, and we're making connections with people and cultures all over the world. This is exactly what the EMC textbook supports. In addition, as the world becomes smaller, particularly with the students' frequent use of their phones and how they connect on social media, it's vital that they understand what is going on in this world. But it's also important to teach them digital literacy. With this new curriculum and the materials we are proposing to use, we are helping to educate the students about where to access information, how to assess the reliability of that information, and how to use the information to work or communicate with others in the target language. These are the 21st century skills that are at the core of education today and are supported by the textbook in question. Thank you for helping us to propel the World Language curriculum into the future, including supporting these textbooks. I love the direction the department has taken and the curriculum has taken, and I am very glad to know that my sons will soon be getting exposed to this in the elementary schools here in Fairfield. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is this the last speaker on the World Language textbook? Please state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Peggy Shore, and I'm from Westport. I teach at Roger Lilo Middle School. I had, I came from Ward High School, where I taught for nine years, just because of this new curriculum and the challenge of working within the curriculum. I teach only 6th grade, Spanish 10. Can I ask a question?
No, but you can pose a question, but we don't respond to questions on public comment. Thank you.
So how many of us have taken, have done, language for three years? And could travel to a foreign country and have a full awareness of what was going on, be able to communicate on some level without feeling completely intimidated? How many of us would be able to have the confidence, after our time in language, to write a letter to the president of a Spanish-speaking country? write a letter to the president of a Spanish-speaking country? 11-year-olds are doing that this year. I do have a sample of the letters that these 11-year-olds sent to the presidents of their adopted country as part of the program to adopt a cultural identity, to get to know well their country, but I do have two letters from the president of Costa Rica, handwritten to these students in response to their inquiry, and they are pretty amazing. These are handwritten, by the way. They're beautiful. We got them, they were sent out at the end of October, November, actually, and we got them back in January, and I was really thankful, because by the time we got these letters back, my students were able to read them and understand what the man was saying. We have...one of my students went over vacation to a Spanish-speaking country, and I would like to read just some excerpts of an email that the parents sent after they had returned. Just a quick shout-out and kudos to Ms. Shore and Fairfield Public Schools' new improved foreign language curriculum, i.e., increased funding for foreign language instruction. Smiley face. I was absolutely blown away by how much Spanish my daughter understood, and she was able to relay practically verbatim every conversation, even those that were long and involved. I was so proud of her and so impressed with the sophistication of her language comprehension skills, especially at such an early-grade level. Then she goes on.
Your three minutes is up.
But that's it?
Thank you very much. Back to the board, and the motion in front of us is that the Board of Education approved the recommended world language textbook per the memo dated April 29, 2016. All in favor, please raise your hand. Mr. Patton, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Calabrese, Ms. Pitco, Mrs. Max and Cannelly, opposed. Mrs. Lou McCormick, Ms. Carnell, Mr. Llewellyn, the motion passes six to three. Just as a quick note before the meeting goes on with item 5F, the Board of Finance has asked Dr. Tidal, which is why he just stepped out, so he wouldn't be late, as well as myself and Mrs. Gerber, who have been following the Fairfield Ludlow Windows Replacement Project, that the only reason it would stay on the Board of Finance agenda is if all three of us showed up to answer questions. So, we need to get to that meeting, and so I'll leave the meeting in charge of our vice chair, Mr. Anthony Calabrese, and thank you very much for coming out. And because we're standing up doesn't mean the rest of you can.
Can I just stay right here?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, next item on the agenda is Old Business, 5F, Approval Policy 5131.7, Students' Weapons and Dangerous Instruments. Recommended motion, the Board of Education approved policy 5131.7, Students' Weapons and Dangerous Instruments. Do I have a motion? Motion by Ms. Cannelly, second. Mr. Patton? Any board comments?
I'll just say very briefly, I didn't receive any questions from the board, aside from Mr. Llewellyn gave me a series of questions regarding some of the phrasing and other items. We did bring that back to policy. Mrs. Carnell, Mr. Calabrese, and myself did go over them and did...none of it was substantive in nature, so we believe that this should still be up for a vote, as opposed for a second-first read. So, some of the wording was cleaned up, parallel structure imposed, and...but otherwise, as I said, I didn't receive any other questions, so I hope this meets with the approval of the board.
Any other comments? Mr. Patton? Can you, through the chair to Ms. Cannelly, can you give us a quick example of just basic grammar, or you're talking...
Well, if you take a look at enclosure number three, you'll see that with policy 5131-point-seven, there's the first draft, and then the second draft, which has the language that is yellow highlighted, was changed. The first one, it was just stricken. The second one was, the wording was, the order of it was changed.
Okay, that's it then. Any other board comments? Mr. Llewellyn?
I support the changes that have been made, but like some of the other policies, I ask that this, too, please go back to policy for an update other than a conforming type that it's gone back for.
Understood, thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, I'll go out to the public. Anybody from the public wishing to comment? Come on up. Seeing none, we'll go back to the board. Any final comments? Seeing none. Motion on the floor is approval of, the Board of Education approved policy 5131.7, Students' Weapons and Dangerous Instruments. All in favor? It's unanimous? All right, motion carries. All right, next is G, Approval Policy 5114, Students' Suspension and Expulsion and Due Process. Recommended motion is that the Board of Education approved policy 5114, Students' Suspension, Expulsion, and Due Process. Motion, Ms. Max and Cannelly, second. Ms. Carnell? Board comments?
Again, just to follow up and just to bring, Mr. Patton I know had asked about this, so just to bring everyone's attention, again, I did not receive any questions from the board about this policy, but again, Mr. Llewellyn had given me some questions regarding language, and so if you look at enclosure number four, the blue, the language that is in blue had been in blue last time, and again, this is a statutory language that has changed, and so we are updating to that, but if you turn several pages, you'll notice that in some cases, for example, on letter L, board has been changed to district. That was one thing that we've been trying to be consistent about that across policies, and we had missed that on the first iteration that came before the board, as well as a few other things that have been moved. You'll see another draft of the policy attached. I'm sure you all saw this already when you received it, and so that was reflecting those questions. To Mr. Llewellyn's previous point about trying to do a little bit of a more cleanup version, we have definitely written this down as being something to look at again, but just a reminder to the board that we were, this was, this whole process for these few months have been solely about responding to the audit and making sure that everything was in compliance or that we even had a policy where needed, so we didn't look beyond that at Mr. Llewellyn's other suggestions, not because we were rejecting the ideas, but solely because we were trying to stay with this idea, but again, we have written this down as something that maybe the board would wish to look at again.
Thank you. Any other board comments? Seeing none, we'll go out to the public. Anybody from the public wishing to speak? Please come up. Seeing none, we'll go back to the board for any final comments? All right, seeing none, we will vote on this item. Recommended motion again is that the Board of Education approved policy 5114, Students' Suspension and Expulsion and Due Process. All in favor? It's unanimous, motion passes. Okay, on to the new business. First item is 6A, First Reading of Policy 5144.4, Students', Physical Exercise and Discipline of Students. It's a mandated policy, enclosure number five. I'm going to turn this one over to Ms. Max and Cannelly to speak to.
Fine, and I don't know if it's appropriate to just make reference to A through G. I'm not trying to fast-track the meeting or anything, but...
I'd be okay with that.
There are a number of policies. The one that's marked on our agenda for deletion is a verbatim the same. That's again, one of those duplicates that we are trying to clean up. The others have a variety of language changes in terms of why we are considering them. This is a good bit of reading. If you have already done some of it, I'd be happy to answer your questions, and if you haven't had a chance to look it over thoroughly, as always, I would hope to get your questions in advance, so that if it's something I can't answer, I'll be sure to have it ready for you. But again, everything that is on here, we are, this is still responding to the audit. There's nothing new on here that's apart from the audit results.
Question, Mr. Llewellyn?
Quick question. So, in terms of A through G, are any of these directly, is any of the language directly lifted from someplace? In other words, you said they're mandated, is any of it a mirror of state statute, for example? Sorry to put you on the spot.
No, it's all right. Yes. I'd have to, if you want me to get the answer, I could be more specific about policy by policy, which ones? Let me write that down.
Okay, any other board questions? I agree, we should just look at A through G here as a whole, assuming everybody's read them. Any other questions? Ms. Max and Cannelly will get the state mandated language on each policy for you before we come back at the next meeting. Okay, seeing no other questions on the new business, A through G, then we will move right on to the approval of the minutes. Approval of the minutes of May 5, 2016, special meeting minutes. Recommended motion, that the Board of Education approve the minutes of May 5, 2016, special meeting. Do I have a motion? Ms. Pitco, and a second, Ms. Max and Cannelly. Any discussion on the minutes, of the special meeting? Okay, seeing none, let's vote. All in favor of the meeting, special minute? Okay, in favors, Mr. Patton, Mr. Calabrese, Ms. Pitco, Ms. Max and Cannelly, and Mr. Llewellyn, all opposed. Ms. Lou McCormick and Ms. Carnell. All right, number eight, the superintendent's report. Assuming we're going to skip that since he is not here tonight, so moving...
I'm going to write Karen off.
No, I wouldn't do that to Karen. We'll move right on to number nine, Committee and Liaison Reports. Do we have any updates anybody wants to give? Ms. Max and Cannelly?
Just regarding PTA Council, obviously, I hope word of this is getting out. I know it's gone out in P J R, but on June 1, there is the recognition of not only the Brian Fagan recipients, which are Fairfield teachers who are going on for their administrative degrees and are applying for those awards, as well as some local Fairfield volunteers, and it's a wonderful night of recognition for people who do an awful lot of work, generally with little recognition, and so that is Wednesday, June 1. That will be at Tomlinson, and it would be wonderful to see board members and other members of the public there to show your support. We do not, we do not yet know who the recipients are. I believe the awards committee is meeting shortly to make that determination, but that's, again, it is a really wonderful night.
Thank you. Ms. Pitco?
Tomorrow, I believe at 7:30 PM, SEPTA is honoring Dave Schultz at, I believe, McKinley School.
Okay, thank you. Any other reports? Seeing none. Open board comment? Anybody have any comments they'd like to make? Ms. Pitco?
Last night, I attended this auditorium to see a screening. The PTA Council did, I'm going to say this wrong, screenagers? It was fascinating. I really hope that we can bring it back again.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Okay, I would, Mr. Patton?
Without, through the chair, without embarrassing any of the staff members still sitting here, does anybody know or have any idea, since this Dr. Tidal having to suddenly leave the meeting was unforeseen, if there was any topics that we might want to be aware of coming up?
He left for the window project. Specifically.
So, we knew that, okay. There wasn't anything that he wanted to get across that suddenly he can't get across?
No, not that I'm aware of. His presence was requested by the Board of Finance.
Okay. Fair enough. I think you'll appreciate that. Well, the only comment I would, oh, Ms. Carnell, you can go.
Thank you. I guess through the assistant chair...
The assistant?
Mr. Cullen. Assistant chair vice, Mr. Calabrese.
Hey, you.
I'm just curious, because I guess the board received an interesting email, and I was just curious if we were able to cut the grass.
Yes. I wasn't expecting that. Yes, I think the difficulty we had is that full week of rain. Contractor didn't get out to a lot of sites, but it did get cut today.
Just to clarify, I've seen that I have a little knowledge in this area. The Board of Ed locations are on a 10-day rotation, if I'm not mistaken, with the contractor?
Yeah, he says it 11.
An 11-day rotation, so if it does rain, they could be 22 days if they get rained out.
Twenty-two weeks of cuts in the budget between March and September, so...
That'll do it.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other board comments? All right, just to close it up, my comment would be, thank you for bearing with me for the 10 minutes I had to sit in for the chair, I appreciate it. Seeing no other comments, do I have a motion that this regular meeting of the Board of Education adjourns? Ms. Pitco, and a second, Ms. Max and Cannelly, thank you very much.
A vote?
And we will vote, yeah. Okay, all in favor? Unanimous. I was excited.
Congratulations.
I was ready to feel like I got out of here in five.